Folks, let's take our seats. And shall we call the meeting to order at 7:07? Stand for the team, pledge allegiance. You, Mayor Goodwin. President. Counselor Dumberow.
Present.
Counselor Page.
Here.
Counselor Heggadorn.
Here.
Counselor McCall Wallace.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Present.
Counselor Ready.
Here.
Thank you. Thanks, folks. And before we get started on our consent agenda, I'm going to talk some more. I tend to do that, and I appreciate your patience. Let me know if you can't hear me. Thanks for coming tonight and being part of the conversation. We're working on better ways to get information out via available city methods, but for now, I'm going to just talk to you openly in these meetings and address what seems to be coming up in the community. First of all, I'm going to ask that folks skip the rumor mill and ask questions directly rather than making assumptions, particularly about the most recently elected members of council. With misinformation moving at the speed of social media, please remember that we're operating in good faith and assume positive intent. For a variety of reasons, any transitional information we received was extremely limited and not provided by outgoing council. We've made our own efforts to connect with staff and get up to speed without anything resembling a handoff, which is genuinely unfortunate. We're working with an imperfect system that we're still learning about, and as we walk through processes firsthand, are discovering some opportunities for improvement. For instance, we have important feedback to incorporate about notices for meetings and internal communications that left some counselors understandably frustrated. Circumstances beyond our control contributed to a perfect storm that's unlikely to happen again, but it's important for us to have processes that help everyone stay informed and participate. What you see is what you get. There are no ulterior motives here. We have been transparent about our intentions and following through on what we were elected to do, which is fundamental representative government. North Plains voters put their faith in us. We're continuing to earn that through actions that are in our community's interest. I'm past the point in my life where I care about sticks and stones, but it's worth considering who benefits by tearing us down at this point. That may be, that may be a perspective to think about if you hear something inflammatory as we keep moving forward together. We do have a full agenda today and need to keep things moving a bit more so we can get to key votes on time-sensitive topics. So I really appreciate your patience and your cooperation. I will try not to cut anybody off. I love having dialogue. That is my favorite part of all of this, but we're going to keep moving forward as ever. Thank you so much. All right, so we have our consent agenda, item six. And Bill, can you run us through that for Lori? Do you have a question?
I'd like to remove item A, the count of minutes on consent agenda.
Where are you moving them to? Normally, you can just let me know the changes now, and I can write them down and change them and send them out to you.
Yeah, I just wasn't, I just couldn't take the motion consent as is, so.
Okay.
Okay. So on item number seven, in terms of the voting for the council president, the we did a, we did a nay vote, and then we did a down-the-line each individual vote, and that did result in the results here with McCall on K, Dumberow on St., Page on A, Heggadorn on N., Page on A, Ready on N., and Woodwood on S. And then we did another roll count vote with a call out of roll count with a change in that vote. So that would be three As, two Noes, two Abstentions. And then we did another vote with the mayor changing the vote to N. So that made it three As, three Ns with abstention being the, essentially the tiebreaker vote. So I think the minutes should reflect that actual process.
With the same result?
It was a, well, the results were different in the voting.
Okay. But we're not saying that Lori's inaccurate on the outcome? Just trying to track the vote a little bit?
And I know that that is what was determined in the meeting as the outcome. I do have a question about that outcome.
Okay. I think that.
I don't think that goes in this agenda item with the minutes. So this was just saying, let's record the actual action that happened in the minutes.
Okay. I think all of us might digest that a little better if it weren't verbal. So what's the process if we do need to make some revisions to minutes? So it's very easy, easy to do. So let me tell you, this, this was a challenge. I'm sure. A big challenge. So what is missing is the following vote that is three A, three N, and one abstention.
Correct.
And, and that's all that needs to go in there. And I, I can, I remember who, who it was.
In the minutes, yes.
Okay. So I could put that in, and that took place after the, after the three As, two Ns, and two Abstentions, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification, Michelle. And let's also add further clarification that this was, this was a new process, which had not been adequately explained prior, and learning and verification was happening in real time.
I was kind of intrigued by that also because that we knew we had any votes. We had three As for Peppa, two Abstentions because it was a majority, there are two Ns. It was a five to two. Why did we re-vote?
I think what we probably want to do is pull this off into another agenda item where we can look into it more reluctantly. Right now, we do have a full agenda. So what would you like us to do at this point?
Well, I mean, that's.
Probably should just discuss it in a different agenda item.
Okay.
To move through the.
Under new business?
Yes, simple.
Okay. We can move to new business?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine. I think we all need to be clear on just that process and so that we're all, we're all on the same page because many of us are new.
And I think we'll also, if we're going to address that, we'll want to get some printouts so that everybody has the verbiage in front of us and look at what the revised draft would be so that we can approve that.
I don't think we need to revise the minutes, we're just recording the information. What we're saying is discussing that vote and the voting process is an agenda item.
For a subsequent meeting.
It now sounds like voting process, but why do we re-vote? How does that work? You know, I never had to have to do this more than it's ready for the news.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that unfortunately goes back to the lack of transition and.
Oh, I think it's not really a transition practice.
Well, those procedures and processes are something which generally, when new folks are joining council, I would hope that there's some process in place to provide information on how these things work, rather than having to receive guidance from city manager and city attorney in real time in a city council meeting. Obviously, that is a little unusual, but that's the situation we're left with. So moving forward.
But Lori, you meant that you're in Dumberow's case as the.
Yeah, that, that is not a point of contention. Yeah.
That's a point in the minutes right now. We're, we're, we're talking about the consent agenda in the minutes. I am changing the minutes to reflect what happened in the meeting. That is different than the discussion about the voting process and what happened with the vote and what that means if there's a five-two vote versus a three-two-two vote. And that discussion, you know, so I think which preemptively we'll be talking about who would or would, or would that change? That is all for a new agenda item, if I understood correctly.
That is what I understood as well. Certainly moving that to a different day. Yep.
Okay.
On a different date? Not today. We've already got an ad hoc enough agenda. All right. So let's move on with the consent agenda, which now includes the item B and C. Any issues on that? All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, item B and C.
Do we have a second? All righty. Any opposed, or do we have consensus? Is there any debate? All right. Lori, let's. I didn't hear. Did you ask all those in favors? Say aye or, I didn't hear the aye. If there's no debate, then let's hold up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any? Any opposed? During that, promotion carries. Thank you. And let's move on to public comment, taking these in order and with apologies, folks, because there are more items on the agenda than usual. We're going to try and aim for that three-minute mark. I'm not going to cut you off mid-sentence. Let me know if you need more time, but let's try to keep it moving forward. All right. First person I've got is Don Weber regarding Parks and Rec.
A thought to throw out. I've been involved in the Parks and Rec for several years. I volunteered to try to get some Parks and Recs going. I'm a huge fan of the library and all the programs they offer, and I'm aware the reason the library was successful is because they have really good staff and the staff plan really good programs. Parks and Rec has no staff. We've tried to do some things with volunteers. Kind of sort of works, but what we need at this point would be a staff member. I didn't realize till I read over the budget, but page forty-one of our current biennial budget said that a part-time Parks and Rec director will be hired for the current biennial. My understanding from talking to Bill is since the levy didn't pass, the money was tight and the city wasn't able to do that. My request would be now kind of late in the biennial to consider using some of the $200,000 contingency money to hire a part-time Parks and Rec director with the goal in mind of getting some summer programs going. I have found some good volunteers. We've got a couple gyms we can use, a good playing field. I think we're capable of getting several hundred kids involved in some programming. I was around when the Y tried to use some programming. It didn't work. The main problem, though, was cost. I think the key is we could keep, keep, create some very affordable summer programs. I've talked to some people. I think we have some college kids, maybe high school, older kids we could actually hire, but what we need is some funds to get us going. So my request is that all of you would consider a resolution. Obviously, you can't do, but a discussion to consider a resolution that you would allocate some of the $200,000 contingency to hire a part-time Parks and Rec person with the hope that we could build a successful programming that we could build out in the future budget. One of the issues I talked to about Bill is who can use contingency funding? So I was reading on it, and they said contingency funding can be used in a case where a revenue source in the budget was no longer present. So in, in my mind, there was going to be a revenue which enabled a part-time Parks and Rec director to be hired because there wasn't a levy. We couldn't hire the person. Therefore, to me, it would be appropriate to use contingency funds. Again, that's for your discussion. But I think this would be a warm fuzzy. I think we could really, I would be very willing to be involved. What I, what I've learned is the volunteers need to be the helpers to the paid person. And I've got some very good volunteers, but we need the paid person that could oversee it and get it going. So our request to consider down the line, a resolution, contingency funds for part-time Parks and Rec.
I appreciate you, Don, and your timeliness. One question back to you, and we'll talk more about the budget, but you were mentioning $200,000 to hire the part-time director. I'm sure you actually meant that some of that is going to be for content, not just for the.
We don't need $200,000. I said around, there's $200,000 in a contingency, which is part of the budget. Part of the contingency monies were going to be used for the rela committee, for appeals and litigation. It's this extra money fund. I am proposing, since we're towards the end of the biennial, use some of that money to get us a Parks and Rec director. That would have to be talked about, how much that would be.
I was going to ask if you've had a placeholder number.
Well, we, I, I think we can talk about that more later, the kind of person we'd want to get, what we're going to cause to give us some summer help for college kids.
That sounds excellent. I agree that that definitely needs to be on a future agenda. Bill, can you add that to the overall list? And let's find a time when Don is able to attend and be part of that discussion as well.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have handwriting. Chris, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, Chris Barron, maybe?
All right. Handwriting.
Blame my vision, not your handwriting. That's a valid thing.
I will, I came prepared because I'm one to rainfall. You'll know that as you serve on commission with me, City Chief. So, good evening, councils, members, mayor, city staff. My name is Chris Barron, and I'm a resident of North Plains. In December 2020, my wife and I purchased our first home here in North Plains, where we reside today. After a year of familiarizing myself with the community and getting acclimated to being a new father, I saw opportunities to serve. In February 2022, I was appointed to the city's Economic Development Commission, where I now serve today as the vice chair. I believe community involvement in local government is not just important, it's vital to ensuring representation in decisions that shape our city. Perhaps because of that belief, or because I have a problem saying no, something I'm sure my daughter will use against me in the future, I joined an ad hoc committee in 2023 to explore local option levy that would have funded 24/7 police coverage and improve the Parks and Recreation Program. I also joined the city's Budget Committee that year. Through these roles, I learned two key facts. One, the city is facing financial challenges. Two, the citizens of North Plains strongly oppose tax increases. Let's be clear, these challenges are not a result of mismanagement, but simple economics. One of the main reasons my wife and I and many others choose North Plains is its low property taxes. However, this combined with minimal business tax base leaves us with a limited budget that our city staff has miraculously stretched to meet the needs for us for years. Some argue that expanding the residential tax base alone would solve this issue, but this logic is flawed. Each new home increases the demand for services, keeping us in the same financial predicament. The solution is more diverse tax base supported by stronger business development. For years, the city, working with experts in the community, developed the Urban Growth Boundary Plan to bring in 855 acres or about 1.5 square miles into the city's boundaries to accommodate growth for the next 20 years. However, the four newly elected members ran on a platform of vote in that plan, which is your right. To call this a sprawl, as you characterized it to voters, is misleading. If a desk jockey like me can run the length of the expansion in under thirty minutes, it's hardly the expansive development you've made it out to be. I'm in by no means shape to be running that much. What I find more troubling, though, is how you've misrepresented personal choice to be uninvolved in the community as a systemic barrier to participation. As I mentioned, it took me a year to get involved after moving here, but when I did, I found the city more than willing to welcome volunteers and input. Cities thrive on community involvement and actively seek it out. It is apparent by the lack of understanding of basic meeting procedures that you've had no prior involvement in city government, only stepping in when you see an opportunity for self-gain. This lack of preparation passed off as we're still learning is quite honestly an embarrassment to myself, to the many others that so served voluntarily, and to the residents of North Plains. Worse, your inexperience and mishandling of your duties is quite honestly dangerous. I'm not going to go into S-Y. You guys can figure that out on your own. So I implore you to learn your jobs. Your ignorance wastes our time and exposes the city to unnecessary risks. Like it is tough, I can't.
Sounds like you're just about done.
I am. It is clear, Madam Mayor, that you approach meetings with a personal agenda far removed from the stated goals of gathering public input. At the first council session, and I watched the recording multiple times, Counselor Page stated he was unavailable on Wednesdays and would not be available on January fifteenth due to a Oscar derby. I hope that one fell. Yet, you scheduled a special session on that date with no urgent justification for the apparent purpose of excluding his voice. The topic in question had a decision deadline of January twenty-second and could have been addressed at this regular session we are now pressing at today. This decision to schedule a special session was a blatant misuse of power, wasting everyone's time and undermining your trust already within your first two weeks in leadership. I stand here not just to voice my frustration, but to remind you that the position comes with responsibilities to the city, its residents, and to the principles of fairness and transparency. I hope you'll take this opportunity to reflect on your actions and rise to the leadership that the community truly needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming and participating in public comment. There's not a whole lot that is constructive in that comment, and I feel like there are some inaccurate. I feel like there are some inaccurate and unnecessarily hostile accusations, but that's okay. You're, you have a right to your own opinion, and that's okay. Thank you so much.
It's a little bit different, and that's also a legal term, so you should watch what you say in a public meeting. You want to call me hostile, I'll get my attorney on you. I'm not showing the playboy.
Wow. Okay. So open, personal, public meeting are not a good look either. Let's go ahead and raise our feedback in a collaborative and a constructive manner.
Awesome to be.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have Chris Edmonds.
Hi, I'm Chris Edmonds, the man from West Lynn, who you all are getting very familiar with. It's good to see you tonight.
Welcome back. Good to see you again.
Unlike the prior speaker, I just got out of the pool after a very long swim, so I'm fully recovered now. I probably could run mini laps around that one and a half miles. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I want to make some really brief remarks encouraging you on the importance of regional leadership. It looks like there's a very full executive agenda, and I will leave that to this council to take that on. But I do want to offer some specific encouragement to the mayor and council president Dumberow, who are taking on the role, if appointed, to represent the city at both MPAC and the Washington County Coordinating Commission. Your leadership and the relationships that you build in these roles will be crucial toward the city's goals to remain independent, prosperous, affordable, ever more livable. I encourage you to build strong partnerships with your colleagues at other cities, where you will have an opportunity to learn from the successes, failures, and challenges that other cities are facing. North Plains must retain its independent spirit, but it cannot go it alone in this environment. I encourage you to participate as well in the League of Oregon Cities and remain aware of the opportunities that exist for the city from both the state, region, and federal government for supportive grants, infrastructure partnerships, and the small but potentially mighty role that North Plains has to play in providing homes for current and future generations, land for employment, and high-quality amenities and parks. I believe you will hear consistently from your colleagues in other cities the particular importance of deriving tax revenue from employment lands. Having decades of experience at every level of government, from DC to the state of Oregon, down to regional government and city government, I cannot stress to you enough how important these regional partnerships are. I wish you success as you take on these new roles, and I look forward to being a champion for you for the good ideas that come out of these relationships. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, we have two comment cards for Greg Brown regarding nine A and nine C. You want to take those together?
You want to, you want to now render the agenda items?
I'm going to leave that up to you. What's your preference?
You're in charge.
I think let's go ahead and front-load all of our public comments so we know how much time we've got left.
Congratulations on reading my handwriting. Always questionable. It has nothing to do with your vision.
New one.
The mayor said these are comments are specific to a couple of agenda items, one of which is regarding UGB appeal and whether that appeal should be dropped. Last Wednesday, Counselor Page submitted some written testimony that described this as basically a financial decision. Spot on. Spot on. To elaborate on that just a little bit, a financial decision is a business decision. Take the motion out of it, look at it as a business decision, and that's benefit versus risk. What's the risk to the city to continuing with an appeal on something that 72% of the voters have already weighed in on? Potentially, ever last Wednesday, up to $100,000 in attorney fees? Potentially being in the same position the city's in right now on the initial court case, paying opposition's attorney fees? That's a pretty sufficient amount of money, particularly we're talking about, geez, can we hire a part-time Parks person? There's a lot of things to spend money on in the city that money could go towards. But if there's a good benefit to it. But what's the benefit of the appeal to the city? How can the city benefit from, if it wins that appeal? Well, it could then have the right to say to 72% of the voters, we don't care. We saw what happened when that was done in the last few months. I would say the odds of that happening, knowing the position that Ford he ran on in November, are pretty slim. So what's the potential benefit? Spending $100,000, potentially double that on an appeal. Again, it's a financial decision, as Commissioner, Counselor Page put it. It's a business decision. What's the risk? What's the benefit? Where is the benefit? I mean, unless I'm missing something, I'm not seeing any benefit to the city with a pretty high downside. I think that's worth thinking about. Second topic that I was going to address, agenda item nine B, city attorney. The city attorney, many, many, many years of working both collaboratively and in opposition with a number of cities around the state. The city attorney is probably the single most critical advisory you've got. No offense to the city manager. He's important, too. The city attorney is the one that keeps you out of trouble, keeps you from doing foolish things, et cetera. For a city attorney, you've got to be able to trust both their technical competency, i.e. they know the law and will tell you the law, even if it's something you don't want to hear, and you've got to trust that they're going to use good strategies when they're representing the city. Confident legally, smart strategically. Unfortunately, the current city attorney does not have a stellar track record on major issues that have been facing the city the last year or so. He didn't keep the old logic, voting the inaccurate info that mandated UGB, that you had, UGB extension was mandated. Actually fought that. He told the legislature, removing UGB extension from the right of referendum would hold up the court. Hasn't come out too well. He lost the court case on the referendum hearing. The transcript that I've read of that hearing says that he acknowledged he hadn't even read the temporary restraining order that was being requested. He lost badly enough that the city finds itself negotiating how much it has to pay for a plaintiff's attorney fees. His strategy during that time of using language and making statements in the courtroom that were so offensive to the judge, the letter of apology was needed, was probably not a real effective strategy. At the time the referendum was accepted by the city, he didn't catch, the city had used the wrong process. They had used the right process, it wouldn't have been subjected to a referendum. Oops. His strategy of publicly stating, quoted in the News Times, that the re-look was a way to, quote, "re-adopt the same position" and then adopting it by a process that wouldn't allow a referendum, probably wasn't a great strategy. Those are judgment calls, but particularly considering how the voters have made it plain how they feel about having somebody thumb their nose at them, it probably wasn't a great strategy to say that publicly. There is a big screaming potential conflict of interest. An attorney cannot represent two clients who may have conflicting interests now or in the future. There are ways that one can get around that. Haven't seen anything that indicates that was done. Again, judgment and strategy. Last Wednesday, Councilman McCall Wallace, who used an analogy of a medical doctor, this was in the discussion about getting second opinions on some of the. I'm sorry?
That wasn't me, but go ahead.
I thought it was.
Yes.
That was your part. From back in that corner, seeing that far without my glasses is. From back in that corner, seeing that far without my glasses is tough, pardon me, old age issue. Councilor Payton used an analogy of a doctor getting a second opinion and that if she had had a doctor who had worked on her and worked on her and was due for surgery, she probably wouldn't want another doctor getting in and confusing the issue. I would suspect that if that doctor, first doctor who was recommending the surgery, had the kind of track record I was just talking about, she would probably want a second opinion and very potentially would want to change doctors. Again, your attorney is probably your single most critical advisor. Be picky, have high standards. That's it?
Thank you very much, Greg. I really appreciate all the feedback. Next, we've got Erin Nichols regarding 9A.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Greg said most of what I was going to say, so I'll leave it very short. I'll respectfully disagree with one thing he had to say, which is that it's a financial decision. I agree that I think the finances are very important here. I agree that there is, I can see no upside for the city and I can see a potential downside of spending quite a lot of money. You know, the biggest upside would be you win on appeal, you actually paid for this, court costs in circuit court, you paid about that for the appeal. And so I don't, I don't see an upside. But I would say the question is less about the money than what you want to stand for and what you want the city to stand for. For the city just to get its argument about the constitutionality of the referendum before a judge, it has to first argue, and fail to argue this in circuit court, that it's legal to do what happened in a special session here in March, the one that was online only. It's arguing that the city can tell a citizen group that it can collect signatures on a referendum, that that referendum is legal, tell them that it will go on ballot, approve those signatures, and then just days before the ballot is to be printed, have it pulled from the ballot with no recourse for anyone who brought the referendum or any of the folks who signed it, asking to be able to vote on it. And so, so that is the argument of this case. And so appealing that is trying to make that legal across Oregon. I don't think, that's not a good process. Like clearly that is not a good process. And it's honestly not a legal process. And I certainly don't think it's a process that North Plains should be defending in court. It was a mistake to run it, but that's, that's happened now and we have, we have a judgment. It'll be the same judgment after the court of appeals. So I don't recommend that. That's what I've said by Greg and I'm actually able to say a better. If you have questions about anything I sent, I sent a lot of supporting documents for, for these arguments. I'd be happy to answer them, but I might take more of your time.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate the emails that you sent to all of council with some background information regarding.
My question is, that is what you did send?
Yes.
And you mentioned the testimony and then are those public comments that were happening at meetings?
I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry, which?
And a document dated as they statements made.
Is this what, is it? The attorney?
No, it was, it was a history one, but it was dated that it was, had happened previously in a
In meetings?
Yeah. Public comments?
Hold on, is this the one that we received today via Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that one was confusing for me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you mind if we maybe ask Lori some questions about?
Is it, was it, where was the statement made?
There are several statements made. There were two, there were two specific meetings in that. The first was a planning commission meeting of the city. And that is where statements were made regarding EOA land being required to come in. The second meeting was a planning commission meeting at the county. And that, and that's what brought on the letter from the DLCD, which you maybe saw in that packet.
Okay, so that does clarify for me. So they were both public comments?
Public comments in public meetings.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that because we also really need to clarify.
Of course, yeah, there's, yeah, there's a lot.
And I don't know, Mayor, if you have other questions?
Nope, just making sure that we were talking about the right email.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin. Last but not least, we have Jeremy Anderson about Zoom meetings.
Excellent. I'm Jeremy Anderson, 0973 North Brooklyn Street, Brent Hill neighborhood. Interestingly enough, my wife just joined the Zoom meeting. It's 42 minutes into the meeting. The Zoom meeting link that was posted on the city's website that we followed, that we joined at 6:58 PM was obviously incorrect. We had to text multiple people. Linda Gallus-Nurden was helpful enough to give us the incorrect ID. Rather than wait and try to figure out what the right ID was, I came to just amazed because I live over there.
Appreciate you.
Because I, I care very much about this city. I, I am very excited about the direction of our future. I attended the ribbon cutting for Chadwick's pit. And I'm, I think that, that the entrepreneurship and the innovation and the spirit of our city is really important. But I have been berated by the previous administration for my lack of participation. How am I supposed to participate if I can't even get access to the meeting that's taking place? That is unconscionable and that is something we absolutely have to fix and address because I will absolutely show up. It matters to me. But I can't show up if I don't have access. And if I don't have access, it looks very, very, very fishy. That something is taking place behind my back and I will not stand for that.
Can I ask for clarification? Because when the meeting started, there were already 20 people on and actually during
I don't know how that got access. I went to the calendar link
Yep.
On the city website.
That's where we started dating from.
URL posted, but it's not clickable. I selected that and clicked go to and was in a Zoom meeting, waiting to be introduced and never got in. I don't know what it is.
I don't know either because we started the meeting from that exact link.
Okay.
We go to the, we go to the calendar so that we're clicking on the exact same link that every resident has access to. And there were people that were in the work session.
Clearly, it's possible to get in, but whatever was on the website did not function.
Were there two links, one to the URA meeting later?
There is one, a different link to the URA meeting that starts after the council meeting, but it clearly says URA meeting. You would have to click on the little blue bar that says URA.
I'm in the meeting. I just joined right now.
From the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, I just joined.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is regardless of, I, I still want to talk to you and Michelle more about who clicked what, where, when, and make sure we can reproduce the issue because, you know.
Something broke.
But
I want to participate. I can't participate if there's not a mechanism.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the long and the short of it, of regardless of where the technical issue came in. This is something which I've personally experienced. I know it's been a recurring problem. We thought we had it baked, but obviously not. So first of all, thank you for showing up because it, bottom line is an equity issue. People should be able to join online, just like the folks who are sitting here in the room tonight. That is a major priority. So I may pester you a little bit to help us troubleshoot this and do some testing.
I'm five doors away. Visit me.
Yeah, I'll bring the dog. But
It's not a big town.
No, 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 no. But this also really ties into, and I've got to shut up so that we get the rest of our meeting agenda going. But in general, this dovetails really nicely in with some ideas that, that I've had recently about how to improve access, you know, off the main page of the website, there should be effectively a big red button that says, I want to join city council meeting and, you know. I'm not promising that right now we have the tech savvy within our existing resources to make that happen tomorrow, but it is something that we're moving towards. And I agree that it is an incredibly important issue. I want to make this easy, goofproof, no more of this.
I haven't heard it now.
Yeah, we just had someone else in the room join as well.
I think, I think also, you know, sometimes there's a lot of information in different places. And I know Councilor Page was able to log in. However, I went in a different way. And I do see, and I can share the screenshot with Lori, maybe to align everything, that there is a different meeting ID and passcode listed for the January 21st meeting.
There you go.
Without a direct link. So maybe that was the one.
That's probably the way I went. I went into this calendar.
Yeah, I didn't have any pace to get in there. So
Well, I have counsel member apologies. And I think that we all were saying, you know, it wasn't intentional and we are working to do better.
I hope it's not intentional.
Yeah.
But it's still not a good look and, and especially given the history of statements made that we shouldn't complain because we don't participate. If I, if I try to participate and I can't because of ineptitude, then that's that's problematic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right. Anybody else who did not fill out a comment card but has a late-breaking comment? Or online? Okay.
So moving forward, Robin, I think you're up. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I'm Robin Doty, the North Plains Library Director. If you forget how to pronounce my name, just think Freddo Doty. You have some bonus materials for me in my staff report this month that was due to year end. Typically, you would see just the one-page report and one page of statistics. However, my report can look however you'd like. So if you, whatever you'd like to see from the library, let me know and I can adjust my report to include it. I did pass out a corrected county statistic report. And I provided Lori a copy. The county had just left some digital checkouts out of their members, so but all the ones on our North Plains internal spreadsheets were correct. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you so much, Robin. Other councilors may have questions as well, but I have heard some rumblings that there may be some additional funds available through some new processes with the county allocating more equitably across multiple cities. And I just want to make sure that you feel empowered to pursue that, that you have the resources you need. Is there anything that we can do to help you? Because that seems very timely and critical.
Thank you. I would love to be able to hold a work session sometime later in the spring to tell you more about that project. In the meantime, though, on the WCCLS.org website, Writing Our Future Together section, you can see all of the steps in the project to date. There are consultants facilitating this with all the member libraries and the cooperative. And it's a multi-year funding and governance project. The, some recommendations will go to the county board of commissioners. And if they move forward on those, it is possible that you know, it's very preliminary, but it's possible that our allocation will increase from what it is now in the next levy cycle. But there's a lot of other factors, so I can't speak to that with any surety at this point.
Understood that there's no degree of certainty at this point. I just want to make sure that you are getting what you need. That sounds like it may be a complex process and there's advocacy required. I just want to make sure that you know that we have our backing and that we are here to try and help. Just let us know.
Thank you.
Help us help you.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to call out on a personal note that I have second-hand experience on how fantastic the content is that you've been putting together for youth. My daughter has really been enjoying it. I'm sure you probably know her. But truly, you guys are doing exceptional work and I'm so impressed.
Thank you. Our team librarian, Brianna, did win a statewide award for excellence in team services last spring at the Oregon Library Association Conference.
Well deserved. Is there anything that you feel like you, you need from us? And I don't want to go down the rabbit hole just because we do have that heavy agenda and I'm looking forward to that work session in the spring. But is there anything at the moment that you feel like might be, be helpful?
I think it would be helpful to review that link on the Writing Our Future Together on the project. There's some other information. I guess just familiarizing yourself with that in general will really help as we start the next budget process. That'll be good background information as we dig in on the next budget.
Okay, and at some point in the future, I would also love to see a wishlist. Everybody always wants money. That is so helpful to fix all things. But, you know, for example, are you looking for more logistics? Do you need space? Think, think about what's on that North Star roadmap and I can't promise that we will get there right away or that we will be able to fill every specific needs, but if you don't ask, we can't help. Sorry. Thank you so much.
I look forward to sharing some of our strategic goals and visions.
Michelle?
I'd also say thank you, Robin, but also to add that it's my understanding with the budget process coming forward that the city manager will be bringing that with him forward since he is managing all of the staff.
That sounds fantastic, but I'd also like to really encourage each of the department heads that the city council loves dialogue. Let's collaborate and let's brainstorm together and that can inform strategic direction as we move forward. Awesome. Thank you so much, Robin.
I just want to say it's a great job being in under budget. If I remember stats correct, awesome. Incredible. The budget cycle is not over yet, but That has been typically for our department. We've come in, it helps to have it, become an enterprise fund management where the funds don't go away, but they go into reserve. I think that's a a good, nice incentive for departments to to watch that carefully.
For the, the accessibility improvements, the apply for a godly grant for $100,000 for people with vision and ability.
Well, it's in process right now, so I can it might be it's kind of, just in the interest of time, I could write up a little like separate report about how that's going. I will have a final grant report when it's done, but we're sort of we're midway right, right now. So there's been community interviews and then we're going to start implementation.
That sounds exciting. I certainly don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd love to hear a little more about it.
Well, our top priority was improving our self-checkout station. That ended up after the interviews with community members with disabilities. That was the top priority, but also there's a list of things we'll accomplish with that grant. And I can go into more detail maybe at another time or in a report.
Yeah, that'd be great to do that. Everybody got all that, we have us here.
Right. Fantastic. Thanks, Robin.
It would help the folks in the room if we shared the supporting documentation of these reports.
I think I think the words are kind of small.
Let's think about that for another time.
Yeah.
Just when, when Robin or somebody is referring to something in their packets, I would love these folks to be able to have some context as well.
I could best around the room when I got to you.
There is a line.
You're popular.
Nice code. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'll keep mine brief because I know we're kind of a bit logical on tonight, but just want to throw out there that I threw in kind of a kind of the year-end wrap-up, a few over stats for the police department. Overall, we came in just just shy of maybe 150 or so less total calls for service for 2024 compared to 23. But overall, relatively busy. Uh, but overall relatively busy. Uh, if you look at, I kind of highlighted in there. Just the calls uh for service per F T E uh for North Plains Police for just almost eleven, sorry, eleven hundred and fifty. Uh, calls for service per F T, which is quite a lot compared to some of our surrounding jurisdictions. So I thought that was kind of an interesting stat that I threw in there. Um, to include obviously monthly stats, but I did the the crime map that I know Counselor Fage enjoys looking at. Um, and then the last page sort of covering hours of the day and days of the week for the last quarter of the year, so. Also in the report, I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to take questions.
So I was gonna ask on the traffic enforcement, mostly if I can avoid it. Um, I know that. Well, I think it was December you said you hadn't started yet that you were gonna get the grant, so when does that start?
Yeah. Yeah, so the grant funding, the it's dictated by uh ODOT when we do these grant cycles. Our first one's coming up the end of January, beginning in February. We have about a two-week window to put out some traffic enforcement and they do it about every kind of every six-ish weeks, every month. So there's a new kind of campaign that we focus on during that time, so we should start kicking that off there shortly in a few weeks.
And is that just existing guys with overtime or are we pulling another F T E?
Uh, it's existing existing deputies in our plans with overtime and if we can't fill it and spend that. I can bring in county resources to fill and spend that grant money in town.
Thank you.
On a on a related question, um the ODOT grant, is that related to going up to three F T E?
No, that's completely separate. Yeah, the the ODOT grant is it's um kind of targeted enforcement missions wrapped around um. Seatbelt enforcement, speed enforcement, distracted driving, D U I and pedestrian safety. So we get a chunk of money for each of those kind of targeted enforcement uh missions. We can do other things while we're on that kind of grant time. But what it is, it's a reimbursement type grant where we spend overtime money to enforce kind of specific target uh targeted traffic. Violations and then we submit basically for reimbursement on an overtime basis. So it doesn't it doesn't cover that that increased service level to the three of them.
Yeah, I think I was just curious how how would funding bring that extra point two five F T E?
That's a very good question for Mr. Reed.
Okay, and then uh before we we jump to uh Bill, uh I think my last question for you would just be uh what's your vision? Or how are we how are we utilizing an extra point two five F T E?
Yeah, so um, well, my vision, I think, um, you know, is really about. Increasing that service level here to kind of meet the demands of the city. The population's grown. Uh, you know, kind of that service level standard is about one to one thousand, one officer per thousand residents per obviously below that. Uh, and and continuing to grow. And so it's kind of looking at that stacking level and see how that can increase downrange and how we can do that incrementally to kind of meet that. And even get to where uh we could be a little more proactive in what we do. Um, but as far as the the extra quarter F T that we've had since July, what that's allowed us to do is instead of losing. Uh, you know, we'd have a deputy that would work Monday through, you know, sorry, Sunday through Tuesday and then a different deputy, the second deputy Wednesday through Saturday. So now they overlap on Wednesdays, which gives that ability for them to do some targeted um kind of targeted missions amongst themselves, the two of them. It gives them that time to collaborate as a team, kind of address kind of livability and neighborhood issues together. Uh, and then it allows um. The uh ability for us to not lose somebody in town in the country, you know, a lot of times when they do in-service or other trainings, we'll do it on that common day that they have together. So we have a North Plains specific person here on those Wednesdays covering those hours and just gives us more flexibility in that regard.
Okay, and just my last 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 question. Um, you know, looking at the graph provided in our packet, it looks like, you know, Monday and Tuesday have. Have some of the highest demand. Is there any reason maybe why we're not utilizing F T E on those days? Uh, because Wednesday is actually, you know, third lowest for the public demand.
Yeah, and so this is looking at just the last quarter, but we do have and we have myself and another deputy here those days. So there's two, there's always. There's at least two, if not three of us here Monday through Friday. And so Mondays across the board in most jurisdictions of the state, because people off the weekend, they've been reporting something on the Monday. And so that's a typical busy day. Um, and that day, so I can't really give you a good explanation as to why Tuesday's the second busiest day in this graph, at least the last quarter. But that's traditionally why Mondays are, if you get people either gone for the weekend and something's gone when they come back, or now they want to take the time to report whatever happened over the weekend. Um, or someone can try to save business for business days, you know, like kind of typically traditional across the board, Mondays are busy.
Thank you.
Again, about the about the channel enforcement, please give some warning. Hey, by the way, you didn't even give us time and date and when it's gonna be, but it's just like, hey. During this next two weeks, you're needing charter enforcement or you want me to show my cards? Not not cards, just everybody that you know.
Yeah.
Up there like, hey, we're doing this.
So that's actually.
Maybe, right?
Yeah.
Hey, guys, we're we're monitoring this, please be aware, and they were being forced it. I think this is great.
And that's that's really the underlying mission is the education piece of these enforcement that actually a component in compliance with the grant. Is we have to, we have to do social media posts about what the mission's coming up within a certain.
And I work holidays, Wednesday through like Saturday. So we we have an obligation to notice the public for this mission, because it's part of the grant condition. Yeah.
Great, and then my question would be, within those buckets that you mentioned, the grant specified. Is there any room for the community to kind of inform what some of those focus and priorities are within the buckets? You know, if we, for example, are hearing from the community or we we seek out some some feedback, for example, that, you know, oh gosh, the. The speeding on X road has gotten out of hand. Could that potentially be an area that you would deliberately then focus some of those? Hours on?
Yeah, so we, any any feedback we get from the community, obviously we prioritize for traffic enforcement and and one of those buckets, if you will, money, the grant money is specifically for. Speed enforcement, and so if we have a speeding issue in a certain area, that would be that would be obviously a focus. And so uh we are limited in the sense that the funding is for those kind of those five areas predominantly. So if it's a seatbelt mission, our main focus needs to be for the grant that we're focusing on seatbelt enforcement. That doesn't mean to say that, oh, we don't stop cars for speed also or these other violations. They want us out still making traffic stops and. And having an education piece. It's just that's what they're asking our focus be. But again, we have seatbelt, pedestrian safety, uh, speed, D U I and distracted driving. So we have those five buckets to play with over the next year of some overtime grant money uh to kind of do some of those targeted missions.
Okay, what do you think the best way would be to help partner with you on that as far as. Where our window of opportunity is, where we would need to gather that community feedback, um, you know. Maybe providing some structure so that we can inform the community very carefully about, you know, hey, these are the buckets, so please don't ask for dogs off leash, you know, things that are not.
Pretty much anything traffic and traffic related is gonna be, you know, fair game when we're doing these missions. Like I said. We our focus may be predominantly this, but we can shift and adjust and, you know, we have a little bit of wiggle room there. So I would just encourage people, if you if you have like an area, I get them, I get them all the time now and.
Yeah.
Um, is just email us if there's like, hey, we're seeing, you know, the stop sign at Main and Ford has been a problem. Is we're seeing this all the time, not gonna stop it. That's on our radar. Obviously, that's gonna be one of the spots that we're gonna try to focus on at some points. And so any community feedback that you want to give is ongoing. Once we do these, like I said, we have these windows that they want us to hit, but we can then. Go outside of those. Once we've done those certain kind of that that mission or that kind of campaign, if you will, of the grant. We can then play outside of that time downrange. And so, you know, in a month and a half, if we see we need to do a little more seatbelt time, we can do a little more seatbelt time kind of thing. And so ongoing feedback, the email's the best way to us and I'll try to respond unless you know, hey, I got it, I acknowledge you that that's an issue. Um, and we'll add it to the list and we'll look through it the best we can.
Okay, great. And for those of us who appreciate you but may not know your email address off the top of our head, we just want to let folks know.
You certainly can. It's it's police chief at northplains.gov.
Okay.
And it's on, it should be on the website, should be easily easy to get right on website.
Um, yes, I just had a comment um, I mean, because I like, you know, it would be interesting in the future if you include um your annual stats to see. How these trends track over time as our population changes.
We'll never. So make sure to follow.
So here over a year. I'm I'm not sure.
Yeah, so my like my yearly call volume per and how the population was that year? Okay, okay, I can do that. Yeah.
Do you have a a idea or uh why we have that higher um. Averages out to approximately the one thousand one hundred and forty-eight C F S curve F T E compared to Bay's Gassed and Encranelian's?
Because our deputies are awesome.
They are.
Yeah, because they're working hard, because they do, they go out and they actually, I mean, they're active, right? Um, but you can see what what our public demand is. It's been it's been kind of the same the last couple of three years roughly. But they they work hard, they're out busy doing stuff, whether it's, you know, uh, that number is not, it's all encompassing. So it's self-initiated activity and public demand, and I will say that it's because their self-initiated activity is so high that drives that that call line.
I just didn't know if there was a problem.
It's because they're out there and it's it's interesting, um. If you look at some of the years where self-initiated is lower, our public demand calls are higher. And so it kind of looks like a nice direct correlation of when we're out doing more self-initiated activity, that should public demand is lower, which is what we want to see. It's kind of a return on investment of our time not doing stuff proactively.
Thank you so much for that. And, you know, to your point, your deputies are awesome. They really are. I I just want to take a minute and voice that. We appreciate the excellent service that we're receiving, that you guys are a valued partner and. I am so appreciative of all the hard work that you do. Maybe one other question, just because I know it has been spinning in the community. Um, whether you have any input on um in the K development, parking and the. Um, truck zone parking as far as suggestions of how we might resolve that amicably and provide a useful alternative.
Sure, so uh I can touch base real quick and Dustin, he might be able to as well, but. Yeah, the West Union and Stewart Lane parking conversation, um, that was a no parking zone dictated by the county. Uh, in the last year at some point. Um, we started noticing, as far as you probably see the orange stickers on windshield's going by there, warning. This is a no parking zone to educate them that we need to not park there based off of the accounting's recommendation of it identified as a no parking zone. Um, Dustin and I are looking, we're in contacts, we got a new contact recently um for county traffic engineering who we can talk to. To address and see if we can make maybe a stretch of that of parking zone and the the stretch culture to Stewart Lane, uh, no parking. The concern obviously is coming out of Stewart Lane not being able to clear traffic uh adequately to pull out safely from Stewart Lane. And also Stewart Lane is really tight and we know it's congested with cars and parking is kind of a nightmare in there, so. Uh, we're we're looking at that, we're working on it. It's not a fast process, but Dustin and I are definitely in contact with the county to how we can address that and. And hopefully come up with a workable uh solution. As far as the semi-truck parking uh. Up in Bryn Hill, it's come up. I think there's still work to be done on that, conversation to be had. We've not gotten to dig too deep into that. Uh, at initial look, there's not a whole lot we have at our disposal when it comes to our city ordinance in it. And so uh we don't have a lot of enforcement options at the moment, but I think it warrants further discussion. We just need to have the time to do that.
Agreed and appreciated. Um, one thing to consider as you're kind of noodling on that and you come back with a perspective maybe next time. Um, read and just email us. You don't have to wait for me to um is. Enforcement is one part of it, but um and this is definitely a Dustin partnership thing. I was gonna pester you about it. Let's try to think about what alternatives we can offer, because this is still a member of our community who's trying to work their. Day job and provide for their family. So I would love us to be able to get creative. And provide some suggestions that they may not have thought of or may not have had access to that information. So I'd love to look at it through that lens too. Okay, anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, short, yeah.
Related to our our fantastic policing uh partners.
Is there, is there a reason why we couldn't take their public comment, like an actual reason?
Taken longer than I would have had, my comment would have been to decide it.
I don't, I mean, defer, I defer, but I just know in the past, uh, we have a state public comment outside of the public comment here.
If that's a preference rather than an actual restriction, I'm gonna say, let's give you your thirty seconds.
I think the issue is that if 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 one person's allowed, obligated to do it than others and then just that's. Written comments always accepted.
Let order be maintained. Highest priority.
Find me effort. Hey, Dustin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Um, I'm not gonna add too much to my report. Um, I could easily have a six or seven, eight-page report. And so kind of like what Robin said earlier, is if there's something specific you'd like to see, I would love to get that information. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to work on with um, the engineering with their G I S team is to be able to, you know, put some hotspots and some actual data. That I can put out, not just for you, but for the public. Uh, but we've been working on that for the past two years, which by the way, I've only been here for just a little under two years. And I just wanted to say that um, I've got a really good group. Um, I only have four guys. This past week, we've only been working with three because Cooley is at C D L training. And I had the, you know, the fortune, I'm the only C D L driver at the moment, and so I had to basically drive the tractor truck for a main break. Uh, earlier this week, and so um, this is one of the many things that that we have to do um, when when the when the duty calls. Uh, and usually I'm stuck in the office, but Ella is out there and filled with the guys, so it it happens from time to time. Um, but one of the things I've been trying to do over the past two years is change us from a reactionary force to a more proactive force. And that's gonna take time and it's gonna take personnel, it's gonna take a lot of budget discussions. Um, and would love to sit down, have a work session, you got a little glimpse um of our budget. You notice there's not a whole lot about public works that was in that budget. That that's a whole discussion in itself that we can talk about. Um, and so um, I would love to talk about that in the future, uh, when you all have time. And I would love to talk to you about my direction that I'm taking the, you know, this this department. Which, speaking of the uh the water main break, I I think in my report I said one sixteen twenty-four, and I'd like to correct that to one sixteen twenty-five. Some minor little correction in there. So, we'll put that. The biggest thing that I would like to add, and I don't know what questions you have for me. Um, is right now, and we were kind of put on notice by T B W D. Because we get a lot of operational support from them on our water system. Um, and right now they are our D R C, and so they basically are the ones, even though we do all the work, they're the ones who are kind of signing everything for, you know, the. Uh, the state.
D R C equals.
Direct Responsible Charge. And so you have to have a certain certification in order to be able to do that. Um, and which at the time when I got here, no one was qualified. Javier has since stepped up and he has gotten that qualification, so he can fill into that role. We were not expecting that to happen for another two years and we're kind of working with him to kind of, we were going to take back. Uh, that D R C and, you know, come or take back our system, but we got kind of put on notice that this um July, they're going to be moving out of our operational limit. Um, and so there are a lot of, um, you know, they they're working on the Willamette Valley, uh, the the water pipeline that's going in. So they they kind of redo their um personnel in that aspect. And so there's there's a lot of coordination that we need to do in the future, but one of the things that's affecting us greatly at this point is. I need another um water technician ASAP. And one of the things that goes with that is, you know, equipment, because we're gonna be losing equipment too that T B W D is gonna be providing. Um, we've got a main line, sixteen-inch main line that goes all the way down to Glencoe um into Hillsborough. And so we've got to have equipment to be able to maintain all that. And that kind of goes into my um, uh, my goal of to be a. Proactive force instead of reactive force. And so it's it's gonna take time and there's gonna be a lot of stuff in the budget that I would love. To discuss why we are doing this, what is important, um, and just kind of give you that that the heads up. Um, which also I I I put in the report, we had a call for opera, a seasonal operations technician. And that kind of was a dud. Um, we only had one person reply, actually responded with a um, a a date. And they didn't show up in the interview, so it's hard to even get a seesaw. So right now it's, I'm giving guests, it's gonna take me two or three months to even find a really good person that's for a full-time position. So just kind of throwing that out there. Um. But as as far as the report, I'll let you say your questions and if you have anything that you really want to see, let me know and I will do my best. Because I, you know, some of you have noticed I wear a lot of hats and I deal with even three J engineering and planning and talking with uh Chief of Police right there. I've worked with a lot of uh the different departments, so there's a lot going on here and I can I can put whatever I need to put in those reports.
I think I have one question. Um, not good now, but could I ask for a finance report on maintenance of private property? We discussed that kind of.
Can you be a little bit more specific on maintenance on private property?
Trapping the beavers. Rolling some mons. I thought you discussed.
I think we're maybe talking about HOA rather than private property question.
So there.
You just discussed it was kind of taking a lot of time and and budget.
Oh, so there's a lot of areas around town in the past 20, 25 years where um, we have been stuck with the maintenance because that's how it's always been done. And so. So that is something that I am trying to work on and it's going to take some time and some communications, uh, you know. Help, um, because you know. Sometimes when it's been done for a long time, but there's nothing to back it, it does can be a little bit of pushback. And so I'm trying to get agreements in place that are actually written down. I've been working with. Uh, June Cameron and Speed Rack and then of course the the county Clean Water Services about all the flooding that's going over there near Gordon. That is a. Jurisdictional nightmare over there because no one wants to handle it. And we even had a staff discussion meeting this morning, you know, kind of discussing some of those things and. I have to take the lead in that to make something happen. And and so there's a lot of things that pop up around town. I'm finding something new, you know, pretty much every week. Um, I talked with Clean Water Services and Twelton, uh, Soil Conservation, Conservation Mother District. Um, about the K Creek area and there's some things, some things that are happening in that area. There's, there's just a lot of things that we just kind of find, oh yeah, by the way, we need to do this and. With a crew of four and everything that needs to be done. We've got to be able to prioritize. And I know we have a lot of things I would love to have a parts, you know, director and everything like that. I would love, love to have that. Um, but there's some things like the water department that is more critical that we kind of need to focus on in the meantime. Um, and of course you learn about the budget and we can't use capital funds for um, operational purposes. And there's some other things that I have to juggle in with that. So there's, there's, there's a lot of things and I think, I think a work session would kind of help.
Yeah, this definitely sounds like a work session. I want to dig into some of those specifics um, and make sure that council is aware of some of these. Upcoming needs, potential pitfalls and that also. Again, I want to just say generally that if you need support and other people engaged to. Help with those conversations, you know, as you are. Are trying to find the appropriate owner for some of these tasks, um, as we potentially start conversations with. Other stakeholders and are perhaps transitioning some of that maintenance back. To um, appropriate owners. That's something that we want to do in a thoughtful and measured manner with good communication, good transition plans and ample time for everybody to accommodate it in their budgets. So I think. Those are things that we definitely want to be talking about sooner rather than later. And maybe helping make some of those connections with. The HOAs, as you said, Joey Cameron, et cetera. Please do a great job of telling us how we can support you and how we can help. Um, and yes, let's absolutely dig into it more in a work session. Can we get that? On the calendar soon. As far as updates and I see hands, give me two seconds to ask one question. Um, as far as updates from you, aside from the. Ask that you please collaborate with our chief on potential ideas for truck zone parking. I would just say this is near and dear to my personal heart. Um, how's it going with the North Avenue construction? Anything you can tell me on that? Or is that something I need to ask?
So that's another. Common misunderstanding.
Realizing it's not really your baby. Do you have any information you can share?
So that is a development project and most of the time I have a lot of say in the capital improvement projects. And so when there's a development project that goes on, they're kind of, we're waiting on the contractor and utilities and everything to move at their own pace. We don't have anything really in our, you know, you know, contracts, you know, say you must finish at a certain time. Because developer driven is a completely different animal. If it was a capital proof uh, project with with our money. Oh, I, we can definitely hold them to a deadline, but that's just not how that works in this case.
Right.
Um, and we have a particular utility that is being really slow, which um, also um, 3G and their inspection team is kind of on it and and helping with this. And not only is this particular utility being slow on North Avenue, they're now being very slow with the Far West Development over there on West Union. Uh, with the new warehouse and everything. So they were, we're kind of strike two with this particular utility, um, kind of taking their time, uh, if you will.
Do you feel like you have an escalation path that's effective or?
We do not really have anything here. I have been in organizations in the past where they had something in place, but that's something that I'm also working with 3G and then. Um, trying to get these standards, details, these procedures all in place. And so there, we have not been a city that needed that for the longest time because no one really knew. And so now that we know that we need to have it, but it takes time to get that enforced and in place.
Okay, thank you so much. And I saw Mandy and Michelle. Both saying they're here. Pass an email.
Yeah, my question was, uh, or comment was that you talked about the 20 to 25 year agreements that are out there that, you know, often happen in. In cities, especially small cities. And um, that it seemed like our role as a, as a policymaker, which is sort of our primary role, um, in terms of policy. That that would be something we would look at as a council to sort of determine what. Policies could be put in place to that and then to help with the advocacy of that within the community to understand. And the educational pieces to understand why we would be making a policy that would include a change that potentially could surprise people after 20 to 25 years. So I just wanted to throw that out there as opposed to us. Which I don't think there's anything wrong with talking to people and doing that, but you know, creating this structure and the means that put that into place is our job.
Thank you very much. Dustin, as always a pleasure. If anybody else has any questions, otherwise you're done for tonight. Thank you very much.
Basically to answer any questions or uh, anything they have on the staff report or any new questions that I don't have on there. But one thing I will touch on real quick for the. Five new members of the council is um, the FEMA code update that we need to do. So um. We do plan on coming before you in February and doing a work session on this to give you some more information, but uh. All of this is coming from FEMA is kind of a top dynamic mandate, if you will. FEMA lost a lawsuit a few years back and as a result of that, um, they have. Uh, reached out basically to 261 jurisdictions in the state of Oregon to say you need to update your flight codes. Uh, per uh, that lawsuit. Um, and so it's really any jurisdiction that um, has uh. Impacts on the coast or any water body that flows into the Columbia River. Those are the jurisdictions that are impacted. So it's only like the. The southeast corner of the state that's not impacted by this. Um. And so the first thing we needed to do was to choose what they called a pick them. Um, so they had uh, three options for us to choose from. And really the best one that we felt was was a good path forward for us was the model ordinance. And so in working with the previous council, uh, they did make that recommendation. So by December 1st. Of last year, we did need to let FEMA know what direction we were going to go with the program. Um, and so we did choose the um, model ordinance as our option. Um, and so we're working through that right now. And what we need to do between now and July is to adopt a model ordinance. So I'm working on that right now. And like I said, we're working on putting together a work session with you folks um, in February. So we can share more information with you. We'll have a PowerPoint, go through the whole thing, answer any questions you may have. But at this time, we're targeting April 9th as our first public meeting with the planning commission on the text amendment. It'll be large um, in terms of the amount of information. Uh, there's a whole chapter of the code that's being updated. Um, and it affects everybody in the city that has property in the floodplain. So we will be required to send notice to all of those property owners. Probably not many of them are aware of this right now that FEMA is doing this. So I anticipate that that's going to generate a lot of interest. Um, and so we'll be pretty busy, uh, once we send out that notice. Uh, of leading up probably all the way through the meetings that we have with you folks. Um, and so because of that, uh, I anticipate the planning commission continuing. Their hearing that they'll have on the ninth to continue to get public comment feedback on the model ordinance. Once they're comfortable with all the feedback that they received, uh, it will move to a recommendation from them. Uh, and then we'll bring that recommendation forward to the city council and then we'll have public meetings at that time. Um, on that recommendation and then ultimately we'll adopt um, a new ordinance. Preferably um, before the day of, it's just July 31st, 25. But yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. And so any questions you may have on the staff report or any other questions you may have, then gentlemen, I'm here to help you with.
First of all, thank you so much for that overview. When you mentioned that you'll be notifying property owners, is that by mail, I would assume?
Yes.
Does this requirement, since it is top down, provide any funding, for example, to distribute that via US mail? That's a hard cost.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last part. Do we have funding?
Well, for the mailing.
Well, I mean.
Depending on how many people we're talking about, if it's a large portion of town, that's a significant.
It'll be um, you know, just looking at it off the top of my head. Upwards of 50 people that we have to know.
So that's a relatively small.
It's relatively small. I mean, we've notified the whole city before. You know, 4,000 mailings, um, which is a group effort. I'll be honest with you. When we have to do that, it's all hands on deck and we all work together to stuff envelopes. To get out the door. Um, and so it is labor intensive to do that type of noticing, but uh, in this particular situation, it shouldn't be too problematic.
Okay, that sounds fantastic. Um, again, just trying to be proactive and get ahead of any potential confusion or community feedback. I would love it if that draft communication is provided with enough advance notice that. Be a bill, maybe we can take a peek at that and make sure that it is. Um, clear and easily understood and that we have um, a good feedback loop for people to be able to reach out.
Yeah, I'll work through Bill with that. Um, there are some requirements that we have to put into those type of notices. Um, so you will see some standard language. Uh, but the rest is really, I mean, I'll be honest with you, you can never put enough information into a notice. You you just can't, um, because no matter how much I put in there, there'll be a question about something that didn't get in there. Everyone in there, our notices would start to become five, six, seven, eight pages, which is expensive to mail. And so we try to provide enough information. To get people in to know what we're doing, but really we hope that they reach out and contact us. So we can have those conversations. With them to get them the information that they need. We'll have handouts we can get to and we can email and stuff. And so a lot of the noticing is to just get people to to reach out as well.
Fantastic. So great. Making sure that those avenues of communication are open and. That people feel like they can fully understand their options because I would imagine these 50 people are probably going to get a note in the mail. And get immediately very tense about whatever this entails. Hopefully they are going to read your complete letter. And reach out in an appropriate manner, but the the better that we can anticipate. Those issues upfront and have this be a a smooth rollout. That's ideal.
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds great. Anybody else?
And then we do have Brian Peeny. Um, he's the other part of our uh, agenda E item here. Uh, so Brian might be able to help you a little bit more with that question that you had about uh, North Avenue, the timing and some of those improvements and whatnot. He, that was a lot of that. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, excuse me, good afternoon, uh, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, sorry, I'm not there in person. As you could probably tell, I got a little cold, so I didn't want to spread that on to anybody over there. Like the rest of the departments, if you guys have any other questions, feel free to ask those, but I will address that North Avenue. A question at least the 309th down to Glencoe. I do know Lumen, who is that franchise utility provider, has started their worker ready. And then um. The uh, Lennar's contractor is helping out as well. So I, you're probably going to see some more movement on that part of North Avenue. Wrapping up very shortly. I do know they want to get it done because it's costing the developer more money by sitting, having their contractors sitting around and not doing it. And then the next phase of North Avenue is going to be west of Maine. In front of the elementary school and Lennar has their team estimated third round of uh, plans for us to review. We anticipate getting those done in the next two weeks and back out to them and hopefully. All the comments were addressed and they can uh, keep going with that side of the construction.
Um, just for visibility, can we make sure that this council has access to? The proposals on the next phase of North? And then. I appreciate that we're, we're getting going on that work between 309 and Glencoe. There have been some challenges, um, and frankly, some safety issues, particularly with. Um, the number of kids that cross there on their way up to Jesse Mays from Bryn Hill. Where it's been noticed that the um, the flaggers who are out there are maybe not. As observant as they might be. And they're on their phones. Um, and that the equipment which has been parked. On the north hands, on the north side particularly is blocking visibility. For pedestrians, bikes and cars that are trying to turn out onto North. There's also been a bit of confusion on, sorry, I'm hitting you with all sorts of issues. Um, there's also been a bit of confusion on those closed sidewalks. Um, and I've again, watched our younger population having to walk down part of the sidewalk, then cross in the middle of the road. And continue down the other part of the sidewalk. What can we do in the immediate? To make this a safer situation while construction completes?
Well, what I can do is um, 3G's inspector goes out weekly, looks at all these private developments. So I will convey this to our inspector. That there is some safety concerns, especially with flagging. He will go out there and observe it. Tell the contractor about it. We'll also follow up with the con, with the owner. Lennar saying we've had these conversations. It's been expressed by council that there's concerns, obviously from neighbors and all that too, but. Uh, but yes, I will get that email out to my team tomorrow. He usually goes out on Thursdays. So you will. It'll at least be conveyed to them this week.
I very much appreciate that. And just to close the loop, um, you know, don't feel like you need to wait for the next city council meeting. Let's get us an update via email if. Um, we're able to shake something loose there. I really appreciate you helping us do our due diligence with keeping everybody safe. Any questions for Brian?
All right, thank you guys.
And. We're not going to finance report because we really did that unless you want to jump in with anything.
I will hand you one anyway.
All right.
We didn't talk about it in the work session.
I love it.
We went to so much. Um, I'll keep it super short and sweet. Um, the city is operating, continues to operate within budget. Federal fund, water fund, we talked about the operating funds during the work session earlier. Really only fund that perpetually has issues and that's just because of. Structuring it and first. Trying to account for on its own is the Jesse, is Jesse Mays. Um, but of course we're not trying to turn a profit with building. We're just trying to figure out how to. Account and plan for it. So. That that being the outlier, um, the city is operating within budget. The only department that I. Been look, the only department, when you look at the charts and you kind of, it kind of shows how much money has been spent today for the um, through the B, through the biennium versus. Um, through the, what the total budget is for the department and the general fund. Um, finance and administration. It it looks like it's up, running a little bit closer than the other ones um, to budget and really um. We, when we go back through and. The kind of due torque, when we close out the year, we'll do a number of journal entries to kind of correct how things have been coded to what department or what expense. We we have, we've had a number of insurance, um, expense coding and finance administration that had been all to that department when. There's probably some other places it should have been. So that fund has some expenses that have been put in there. That when revised for correction, the gap between budget and expenditure expenditure today will 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 get a little bigger. Otherwise we're doing pretty well. Uh, I, you know, I would just, I think the information for 10 years now endorses the fact that. The expenditure control budgeting system that we've implemented really does incentivize folks to save money. And be wise with the money, uh, with the resources being limited and it's working. So. Um, I'll leave it at that. Send for any more questions and.
So um. With uh, Space Age, um, repairing the tanks. I know this is in December, but do we have any impact on gas revenue?
Um, we haven't seen, at at least for last month, we collected a fairly normal. Low tr, low traffic December, I think it was 11 or $11,000 during the month. I haven't seen our number really go down yet in terms of recording. So, um, not yet. But just so people know, it's a great question. And, and the reason we do track it is because the local fuel tax is, uh, we bonded against it for all the transportation projects. Um, we're, we're not, we're not at any threat of that revenue being too small to make debt service payments. But, but we do watch it. So, thanks.
The ninety-eight thousand for the speed radar signs, do you have those? Are those the ones that are already out?
They are. Um, those. Um, okay, um, we might have to bring Dustin back up again, uh, as far as where that's going. But as far as the money goes for that. Yeah, those, those speed radar signs were approved as, as part of our ARPA expenditures, the American Recovery Plan, um, act. And, uh, the previous council kind of dedicated where the funds would be spent. Uh, but when we put the budget together for public safety, we forgot to include that line item, even though the ARPA plan included it. So the supplemental budget that we did in December added that ninety-eight thousand for those signs, but they, but those are the ones that are already here.
Those are the ones, are you talking about the four ones that are, um, the, there, because we have temporary ones. And then we have four of them that were actually permanent over here on Commercial and North Avenue. The ones that I believe are out of the ninety-eight thousand dollar funding is the ones that are the more permanent based ones that are on Commercial and North.
The ones I'm referring to are, I'm just a big, I'm a little worried, but I haven't seen them on in months.
Yeah, there's complications with the radar signs.
I know you've mentioned that.
Yes.
Our tour. Is there any resolution to getting them back on the running? Do we need?
At the moment.
There's no warranty or whatever you could call on that?
Um, to be very short, um, working with that particular contractor has been, uh, difficult.
Don't worry about it.
Awesome. Okay.
I was around North to work because I have heard that people have a deal. It's always flashing. So, not that I know.
Thank you so much, Dustin. If you need any, again, if, as always, if you need any help, if you are not finding an appropriate escalation path on getting those fixed, please bring it back as an intuitive that we can work on together. Anybody else for Bill? Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right. And that leads us back to nine K unfinished business for the UGB referendum appeal discussion. Now, this is something that we started to address last week. Um, and just again, to provide full disclosure and talk about some things that may be spinning out in the community and the rumor mill. I can't speak for existing council members, but none of the recently elected council has any financial interest in what this decision is going to be. Um, we are continuing to incur costs, unfortunately. Um, our meeting on the fifteenth was necessary and time sensitive. And there is a decision which needs to, needs to be made tonight in order to respond to a, um, concession, which is available only through nine AM tomorrow. So let's go ahead and be as strategic as we can here and make sure that this ends in a, an outcome that we can take action on. Um, it seems like we may need some clarification on the strategic purpose of the appeal and the effects of the different options. Um, so Bill, I'm going to kind of defer to you and Chad to give us some context on this since we weren't able to receive information last year or last week. Well, some parts of this are executive session and some parts of it are not. And I'd like to kind of get a, a feeling for the temperature in the room, whether we want to kick these fine folks out into the parking lot.
Hundred percent.
I think if, just the, the question, it kind of falls under the category of, um, closed session. When there's five reasons we can take closed session or have to take them by law, and this is one of those with the negotiations. And I understand there's context behind the negotiation, but that's part of the question about what the risks, the liabilities and all of those things are. But it's not to exclude anyone. We are mandated by law to go into executive session, um, for this conversation.
Potentially, but a lot of this information is available publicly. I'm curious whether there is a path forward for us to have the meat and potatoes of this discussion, publicly available information. And then if we wanted to make a private negotiation decision based on a dollar amount, that would make a decision.
Yeah, make a decision in executive session.
There's no discussion here. That's me.
We have to go to executive session and then come back out to make a decision.
Okay. All right. Order of operations then. Do we have some options to potentially move this further down the agenda so that folks who may be interested in the relook or other topics are not? Okay. Well then, folks, my apologies. I hope you have good heaters in your car and you are absolutely welcome to come back. Can we commit to perhaps opening the door of visual signal when we're ready for you to come back? Yep. Do we have any suggestions on how to make this a little more, less disruptive for our?
Well, that's it.